Into session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for March 7th, 2023, beginning at 6:41. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the board trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted out by our security. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Hibbs in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I am going to take the liberty to move something around. I would like to ask Mr. Andy Nguyen if he will do a presentation from the Vietnamese-American community of Tarrant County.
Madam President, members of the board, first of all, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight and thank you for your dedicated service to all communities, families, and children. With me are members of the board from the Vietnamese-American community of Tarrant County. This is Ms. Thoan Than Nguyen. She is the chairwoman of the board as well as president of the organization. This is Mr. Hui Nguyen. He is a board member as well as a mathematics teacher at Sam Houston. Nguyen Nguyen, she is the education chair of all community and Ms. Hang Nguyen is the community liaison of all community. So I'm gonna ask Thoan to say a few words.
Good morning and good afternoon to everyone. My name is Thoan Nguyen and I'm a sophomore at Sam Houston High School. On behalf of the Vietnamese Student Association present there, I would like to say in my warmest gratitudes to Dr. Cavazos and the board members for serving the need of education to our communities. The VSA SM was established last year and we are slowly but steadily growing. We share the value of our culture and education amongst ourselves and others. The likes of our members have been successfully admitted to Harvard and Stanford last year and we promote diversities in a multicultural demographic such as Arlington ISD. We have also volunteered to help the community around us with social and cultural activities. We have achieved these good results, all thanks to the support of our teachers and administrators at Sam Houston and to our outstanding principal who is present here, Mr. Villaire. And last but not least, thank you, Dr. Cavazos, for having served our community throughout the years. We wish you a warm and happy retirement for the next chapter of your life. Thank you.
And on behalf of the Vietnamese-American community in Tarrant County, we would also like to thank Dr. Cavazos, not only for your wonderful leadership and effective servant hood, but also your friendship to the community. You have always been a very down-to-earth individual, highly relatable and caring and we really, really do appreciate you and certainly all the board. But Dr. Cavazos, I hear you are leaving in August. Not soon enough. No, I'm just kidding. And I sure will miss you. We will miss you. And like I shared with you previously, I hope that you will take up the next career as a stand-up comedian. I think you'll be good in it. So if you don't mind, can you step down here so we can present you with a plaque of appreciation? The plaque says, "The Vietnamese-American Community of Tarrant County and Vicinity, on the occasion of retirement, presented to Dr. Marcelo Cavazos, Arlington ISD Superintendent, in appreciation and recognition of your outstanding leadership and service to our children and families. Year of the Cat, February 12th, 2023."
Thank you. Tonight. Thank you. We'll take it. Yes. Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay. One more, one more, one more. One more, one more, one more. One more. Okay, there you go. Hi. Okay. Get out. Yeah. Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, there you go. Hi. Okay. Get out. Yeah. Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two. Okay, this guy's gonna take one.
One more. I want you to write this down.
Here we go. One, two.
And proudly with all opportunities, Sam Houston. My plans are to attend TCU or UTA, major in criminal justice, and to attend law school to become an immigration lawyer. Again, I want to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity. Para mis papas, les quiero dar muchas gracias por todo, lo que han hecho por mí y por siempre apoyarme. No hay suficientes palabras para agradecerles. Les quiero mucho y gracias por todo. I'm proud to be a Texan and to attend Sam Houston High School. Let's go Sam.
Mom's crying, now I'm gonna cry. Wasn't that sweet? Adrian, we are so proud of you. What an amazing student you are, and your future is so bright. Don't forget us back here at AISD when you get out in the world. We are so proud of you. May we come down and take a picture and give you a gift?
Of course.
Thank you.
I've been practicing it too, because I wanna, I was doing it like this and like that.
Or you could have done this, Adrian. Pardon me?
Yeah.
Adrian, this is a pin that if you notice, all of us wear, and it is not given to just anyone. We only give that to very special individuals, and you certainly fit into being a very special individual. We hope that you will wear that with pride, because we are so proud of you. Welcome.
Adrian, this is also for you to remember this evening and to memorialize really how proud we are of you in our school district. You represent our students and our staff and everyone here exceptionally well. This is for you. Felicidades a los padres también. Él es un estudiante muy especial, y los agradezco a ustedes. Va a tener mucho éxito. I know you'll have a lot of success, Adrian, so congratulations and enjoy tonight.
So that was our March Student of the Month, and now we kind of go back a little bit for our February Student of the Month, and that is Martin High School and Mrs. Roddy.
So, President Fowler, it's a little bit late. We've had weather incidents twice now, so... But President Fowler, Board of Trustees, Dr. Cavassos, Martin High School selects Erin Kelly to the district, for the district, February Student of the Month for special recognition. Erin has been involved in multiple activities at Martin, including the MHS Hackathon, the MHS Robotics Team, the captain of the UIL Computer Science Team, and the MHS Robo Boat Team. Erin has always loved math and became focused on taking the Advanced Placement Computer Science courses at Martin. He loves participating in UIL Computer Science Team because he has competitive spirit and he loves the team, and he loves to learn. His favorite teacher is his computer science teacher, James Hovey, who he says gears the computer science classes around his students and their interests. Erin plans to be a software engineer or something similar in the computer science field. Erin is also a STEM practicum student at Lockheed Martin and works in their IT department. His current project for them is automating security scans on a server. He says he has learned a great deal about the architecture behind the server and how it operates to allow access to all departments at Lockheed. I'm not sure that's a good thing to have. Erin is a National Merit semifinalist who has scored a perfect score of five on all eight of the AP tests he has already taken. He also made a perfect score on his ACT and almost a perfect score on his SAT. Erin always challenges himself to take a rigorous course load. Currently, he's number 20 in the class of 869. Erin is enrolled at UTA, is taking College Calculus III and Introduction to Computer Science at the present time. This past week, he along with his teammates came in second in the Calculus Bowl held at UTA. Through church, Erin has volunteered and assisted at Mission Arlington, helping those less fortunate with childcare, moving, and food donations. Erin has also led Lunch and Learns at Martin High School, helping students with their school assignments on a regular basis. Erin says that serving others with no expectation for reward helped him realize that the abilities and strengths that he has helps others with little cost to him and lots of benefit to those he helps. Erin worked for the Texas Rangers Golf Club, handling all kinds of responsibilities from cleaning to customer service. In Erin's downtime, he loves to listen to jazz. One of his favorite jazz artists is John Coltrane. Erin is the second child in a family with four siblings, and Erin has his parents here with him this evening. Congratulations to Erin Kelly.
Erin, tell us a little bit about yourself and introduce your family members that are with you.
Okay, I don't really have anything prepared. Wah wah. My dad is here, my mom is busy today because we scheduled a couple times. But she kind of said it all. I really do like computer science. I like the problem-solving aspect of it, and so I enjoy competing in the UIL competitions, which is sort of my outlet to compete. Yeah, I didn't have anything prepared, sorry.
Tell me a little bit about this Hackathon.
Oh, okay. It's sort of like a lock-in at Martin. We get a bunch of teams and get a prompt, and then we all develop some sort of solution, software, hardware, et cetera, to the prompt. It's fun. It's like 36 hours or so of just computer science, and we have different events, cybersecurity competition, coding competition this year, so stuff like that.
Wonderful. All right, will you promise us that you will use your genius for good purposes?
I will try.
All right, Marie, you made that promise. May we come down in and give you a gift and get our picture made?
Sure thing.
Thank you. Well, Erin, this is something that we only give to very important people, and you are very important. And so this is a pin that all of us wear. We would like for you to have one. Please wear it if you so choose and know that we are proud of you and that we'll represent AISD, and we're proud of all that you do to represent AISD.
Thank you.
Erin, this is also for you, and a thank you for representing AISD exceptionally well, Martin High School, and all our student body. You're very, very talented, and we wish you the very best. I know you're gonna have a bright future. This is for you. Congratulations.
Right here, remember your promise. And it's as if that wasn't an awesome demonstration of the type of students that we have here in AISD. They're absolutely remarkable, but now we have even more remarkable students.
That is correct. President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, many scholars in our room tonight, and many of you who have loved and raised a scholar. We're going to give them a lot of praise tonight. Before we do that, I want to take just a minute to introduce this year's National Merit semifinalist, the National African American Recognition, the National Hispanic Recognition, and Indigenous Recognition. Before we introduce those scholars, I'm gonna say just a few words about these programs. First off, as you can see by looking at the room, it's a full room tonight, and y'all are group number two, because the Arlington ISD had so many scholars recognized this year, we could not fit everybody into one board meeting. So group number one, they were super lucky. There was no ice storm. There was no severe weather storm. They got to come on their scheduled night and all participate. You guys, lucky y'all, or as Erin would say, wah wah. The winter storm, I mean, the weather storm prevented us last time, so we're so happy to have all of you here tonight. So tonight, we're gonna honor 69 of our scholars. In total, in these two meetings in the Arlington ISD, we had 141 scholars. Yes, I agree, it's great. It deserves sound effects. So 141 total students receiving scholars, absolutely. And just to drive that point home for comparison, we had 61 last year total. So we have more being honored in one night than we had last year total, which is really exciting. So let me tell you about the programs and really what they mean. The National Merit Scholarship Program, it's an academic competition for recognition and scholarships, and it's available to any students who take the PSAT, and they meet the published requirements. 1.5 million students apply every year, and approximately 50,000 across the US qualify for this recognition. This year, Arlington ISD is home to seven of those scholars. The National African American Recognition Program identifies the outstanding African American high school students, and they share information about those students with colleges and universities to show that they're academically prepared, and this year Arlington ISD has 44 of those scholars. The National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies the National Hispanic Scholars, and they also share information with colleges and universities to demonstrate that these students are exceptionally prepared. This year, Arlington ISD is home to 90 of those Hispanic Scholars. We also have two students tonight that are receiving the National Indigenous Recognition. And just a few other notables about this special group of scholars. 78 of them started in the Arlington ISD in either pre-K or kindergarten. And just an aside, registration for free pre-K opens April 3rd. Don't miss it. The college board also honors juniors this year, and Arlington ISD has 48 juniors that are receiving honors. The top three frontrunners as far as colleges go, and y'all can probably guess, University of Texas? I knew that was gonna happen. UT Arlington? Mavs need a better symbol, right? I'm a Mav, by the way. And, wait for it, Texas A&amp;M. Every time. As for college career choices, the top three frontrunners among our scholars are biology, nursing, and engineering. So this evening, our students are gonna be the very first inductees into our 2223 Wall of Fame. There's gonna be an invitation for you to come join us for a special pinning event where you'll receive a Wall of Fame pin on June 5th and officially be inducted into the Wall of Fame. Tonight, we have three of our schools represented to celebrate their honors. First up is Stacy Humbles, our principal with Arlington High School. She's gonna call up her students, and she'll talk a little bit about their plans, and when she's done, our honorees will share a little bit about where they want to go to college, their aspirations, and things of that nature. So Principal Humbles, I'm gonna turn it over to you to start our celebration.
All right, thanks Anita. President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, thank you for allowing us to recognize these kids, especially after the rescheduling. And just to hear the numbers this year to double and triple, I know it's only gonna grow, and I'm just so thankful that you still choose to recognize these kids individually, even as more and more of them excel. These kids that I'm presenting today, and I know that my peers are presenting, are just outstanding kids, and they fill our buckets every day, and they work so, so hard. And this group behind me, I'm so proud of, as I've gotten to know them, they're fun to talk to, they're involved in school, and clearly are scholars, so. With that, I am honored to start introducing first Adria O'Shea for the National African American Recognition. She's a junior, and she's currently undecided on her college, but plans to go into nursing. Joannas Ariola, she is the National Hispanic Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to Texas UT and major in business. Hannah Durkey, she has the National Hispanic Recognition, 12th grade, and she hopes to attend Northeastern University and major in marine biology. Next is Tamara Galladay, National African American Recognition, she is a senior. She hopes to go to the University of Alabama and major in molecular and cellular biology. Next is Sebastian Hernandez, National Hispanic Recognition. He is in 12th grade. He hopes to attend UTA and major in biochemistry. Next is Tanija Klein, National African American Recognition. She's in 12th grade and will attend the University of Texas at Arlington and major in marketing. Justina Lesby, National Hispanic Recognition. She's in 11th grade and will attend UT and major in biochemistry. Olivia McDaniel, National Hispanic Recognition, she's a senior. Will go to Texas A&amp;M and major in science and kinesiology. Avlin Moore, National Indigenous Recognition. She is in 11th grade, will attend the University of Texas UT and major in biology and pre-med. And Miriam Olayemi, she earned the National African American Recognition. She is in 11th grade, will also go to UT and major in actuarial science. These are our Arlington High scholars.
Hi, I'm Adria O'Shea, and today I'm here with my dad, Adrian Brazil.
Hi, I'm Joannas Ariola. I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my younger brother.
Hi, I'm Hannah Durkey, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my boyfriend.
Tamara Galladay, I'm here with my mom and my brother.
Hello, I'm Sebastian Hernandez, and I'm here with my mom, Wanda Valero, and my dad, Roy Valero.
Hi, I'm Tanija Klein, and I'm here with my mom, Robin Klein.
Hi, I'm Justina Lesby, and I'm here with my stepmother, Daisy Tena, and my father, Rocky Lesby, and I'm so grateful for them being here.
Hi, I'm Olivia McDaniel. I'm here with my parents, Howard and Stuart McDaniel, my grandparents, and my siblings.
Hi, my name's Avlin Moore, and I'm here with my wonderful mother and father, Aloe and Jarvis.
Good evening, my name is Miriam Olayemi, and I'm here with my beautiful dad.
Way to go, y'all. And I am introducing the fabulous Andy Hagman from Lamar High School.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the Lamar students who are being honored. I did not get a chance to take a roll call before I came in, so we're going to recognize them all, and if they happen to be here, fabulous. First up, Joanna Ariano. She is being recognized for National Hispanic Recognition, 12th grader. She is planning on attending UTA and studying nursing. Ms. Jessica Carter is a National African American Recognition honoree. She is in 12th grade. She is considering Texas Southern, Prairie View, University of Central Arkansas, UNT Denton, and the University of Alabama at Birmingham, and she would like to study health sciences. Matthew Rock is a National Hispanic Recognition honoree. He is a 12th grader. He is considering TCU, UNT, and UTA, and he is looking at studying music theory and composition, and composition emphasis. Felicia Noriega is a 12th grader at Lamar. She is being honored for National Hispanic Recognition. She is planning on attending Tarleton State and studying agriculture development and services. Favor Okocha is an 11th grade student, National African American Recognition honoree. She is hoping to attend Johns Hopkins University, Duke, Rice, there she is, or the University of Houston. She would like to major in pre-med, biology, or biochemistry. Austin Palacios. Austin is a National Hispanic Recognition honoree. He's a 12th grader. He is hoping to attend either one of the United States Military Academies or Baylor and study political science. Vanessa Salazar is a National Hispanic Recognition honoree, 12th grader. She is planning on attending UTA, Tarleton State, UNT, Texas A&amp;M, or TCU and studying biology. Desiree Vargas. Desiree is both a National Hispanic Recognition honoree as well as a National African American Recognition honoree. She is a 12th grader, planning on attending the University of Denver and studying psychology. And last but not least, Irvin Vidal, National Hispanic Recognition honoree, 12th grader, going to UTA and studying mechanical engineering.
I am here today with my mom. I just want to thank her for all her advice and always pushing me to do my best.
Good evening, I'm here with my dad today, and I want to thank him and the rest of my family for always pushing me to do my best and for setting a great example for my brother and I.
President Fowler earlier mentioned cuteness overload. I would like to continue that by inviting Marlene Roddy back up to the podium, so she can introduce Martin's scholars.
Okay, President Fowler, Board of Trustees, Dr. Cavassos. Well, Tuesday turns out to be a really busy night at the high schools, so some of them aren't here, but we have 45 students that are being recognized this evening, and so I'm just gonna call out their names and say their exciting plans, and I'm gonna start with one student who needs to get someplace. So it's not in alphabetical order, but that's Sabina Gonzalez. She has National Hispanic Recognition. She's a junior at Martin. Her hope, dream, is to go to Columbia University, but she would settle on UT Austin or even UTA. She plans to go into neuroscience with a research focus. Are you still trying to get someplace? You want to? Yeah, so can she just, who do you have with you this evening? Are you by yourself? Did you want to say?
Yeah. I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my brother, and I want to thank you all for always showing me love and always pushing me to never give up.
Thanks. Okay, so next is Paula Acevedo, who is not able to attend. She's a National Hispanic Recognition junior, wants to go to UTA, and her focus would be medicine. Next is Adria Akosu. She's a National African American Recognition. She's a senior. She hopes to go to one of these schools, University of New Mexico, University of Houston, University of Pittsburgh, University of Massachusetts at Annhurst. Her plan is to be pre-med and biomedical studies. Next, Preston Burke is playing in a soccer game this evening, but he has National Hispanic Recognition. He's a junior. He hopes to go to UTA or Texas A&amp;M, and he plans to major in engineering. Next is Taylor Calhoun. He's National African American Recognition. She, I'm sorry, she is National African American Recognition. She is a senior. Her plan is to go to UNT, NCAT, or Texas Tech. She wants to major in kinesiology with a minor in music performance. Next is Kaylee Cartwright. She's in a UTA class this evening. She's National African American Recognition. She's a junior. She's thinking about UT Austin or Stanford, and she plans to be a business or computer science major. Next is Carmen Chandler. She's National Hispanic Recognition junior. She's thinking of UTA, Caltech, Penn State, Columbia, or UC Berkeley, and she plans to major in computer science. Allison De La Puerta. She is National Hispanic Recognition, a junior. She plans to go to UT at Austin or University at Austin or University of Chicago or La Salle de, oh my goodness, Bejo, Bejo, and she plans to major in Dentistry. Next is Miriam De La Rosa. She's National Hispanic Recognition. She's a senior. She's thinking of University of Chicago, University of Texas at Arlington or Austin, School of the Art Institute in Chicago or UNT. Her interests are Humanities and Classical Studies, specifically Art History. Next is Oladia Famojura. She's National African American Recognition. She's a junior. She plans to attend Johns Hopkins, New York University, or Baylor University. Her plans are to major in Biology or Psychology. Next is Noah Gardea. He's not able to attend. National Hispanic Recognition Junior, thinking of UTA or UC Irvine, UPenn, Georgetown, or Washington University. He plans to major in Computer Science and Cyber Security. Next is Christopher Gonzalez, National Hispanic Recognition Junior, thinking of MIT. He would like to study Computer Science. Next is Nicole Garderes. She's a National Merit Semi-finalist and a National Hispanic Recognition. She's a senior, plans to go to Rice University and major in Chemical Engineering. Next is Catherine Hall. She's National African American Recognition. She's a junior. She's not certain yet about her college plans, maybe UTA, and she plans to major in Medicine. Next is Caroline Honia. She's Indigenous Recognition. She's a junior. She plans to go to OU and major in Biology. Next is Ava Horton. She's National African American Recognition. She's a junior. She plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin or North Carolina Agriculture and Technical State University. Her plans are Environmental Engineering or the Sciences. Next is William Ingram May. He was unable to attend. His, he was National African American Recognition, a junior. He's looking to go to UT or University of Chicago. He's planning to have Software or Computer Engineering. Next is Aaron Kelly. He's a National Merit Semi-finalist. He's a senior. He has UT, UTD, UTA, TAMU, Rice, Georgia Tech, OU, or OSU as possible choices, and he plans to major in Computer Science. Next is Brandon Kim. He's a National Merit Semi-finalist. He's a senior. He applied to UT, MIT, Harvard, and Stanford. He's waiting for admissions. He's a Math and/or Computer Science major. Next is Cassidy King. She's a National Hispanic Recognition Senior. She's planning to go to University U Arts in Philadelphia, UTA, or Texas Tech. She plans to major in Art Animation, Cinematography, or Game Design. Next is Rebecca Laura. She's National Hispanic Recognition. She's a senior. She's interested in UT Austin, UT Dallas, Rice, University of Southern California, MIT, and Stanford. She's interested in Computer Science, Computer Science Business, or Electrical Engineering. Next is Leila Lee Sanders, National African American Recognition. She's not decided yet about college, and she plans to major in Biomedical Science. Next is Elizabeth Marsick. She's National Hispanic Recognition Senior, UT Austin, UCLA, or Vanderbilt, and she plans to major in Nursing. Next is Lawrence, Laurent Agwaka. He is a junior. He's National African American Recognition. He would like to go to Rice University, or maybe University of Houston, Baylor, or Texas A&amp;M, and his major is Business. Next is Deji Olabegi. He's National African American Recognition. He's a senior. He wants to go to Georgia Tech, University of Michigan, University of Southern California, or Howard University, and he plans to major in Nuclear Engineering. Next is Charles John Alloz, National African American Recognition. He's a junior. He's plans to go to University of Texas at Austin, or UT Arlington, Yale, or University of Michigan. His plans are Engineering and/or Business. Next is Aubrey Paris. She's National African American Recognition and National Hispanic Recognition. She's a senior. She's not decided yet, but she's received admissions, so I guess she's not telling, and her plan is Astronomy. Next is Laura Pyle. She's National Hispanic Recognition. She's a junior. She's looking at Northeastern or Boston University or RISD, and she plans to major in Graphic Design. Next is Natalie Plensia. She's once, was unable to attend. She's National Hispanic Recognition. She plans to go to an in-state school like University of Texas at Arlington or University of Texas at Austin, Tech, or Baylor, and her plans are to be pre-med. Next is Stephen Q. He's a National Merit Semi-finalist. He's a senior. He plans to go to Rice University, and his major is Biological Sciences. Next is Emilio Reza, National Hispanic Recognition Junior, considering MIT, Stanford, UT Austin, UT Dallas, Rice, Baylor, Harvard, Yale, or USC. He's a Mathematics and Computer Science major. Next is Olivia Roberts. She's National Hispanic Recognition and National African American Recognition. She's a junior. She's looking at applying for next year, and she's, her interest are Chemistry. Next is Sebastian Rodriguez. He's National Hispanic Recognition Junior, University of Texas at Dallas, University of Texas at Austin, Georgia Institute of Technology, Rice, UCLA, Stanford, or MIT, or his college interests. He plans to major in Computer Engineering or Astrophysics. Next is Moises Sanchez, National Hispanic Recognition. He's a senior. He's thinking of Texas A&amp;M, UT Austin, or UT Arlington. He's planning to major in Aerospace Engineering. Next is Dewey Serakai, National Hispanic Recognition Senior, plans to attend Northern Arizona University, New Mexico State, UT Arlington, or Texas State. His career, her career, I don't know what I'm saying, her career just is Microbiology. Next is Abdali Sardinaroa, National African American Recognition, unable to attend this evening, but is thinking of Columbia University, Rice University, Harvard, Emory University, or Cornell, plans to major in Business or Biology. Next is Madison Scruggs. She is National African American Recognition Senior. She's looking at University of Kentucky, Penn State, University of Minnesota, or North Carolina Agriculture and Technical School, and she plans to major in Business or Marketing. Camille C. was unable to attend. She's National African American Recognition, a senior, plans to attend Spelman College or University of Oklahoma, UTA, Loyola, Chicago, Penn State, Hampton University, or Xavier, or North Carolina, ANT, and major in Biology or Criminology. Next is Jermilia Spivey. She was also unable to attend. She's National African American Recognition. She's a junior. She plans to go to UT Austin, or UTA, Spelman College, UCLA, or Columbia. Her major would be Biochemistry, Pre-med, or Psychology. Next is Jake Sweat. He's a National Merit Semi-finalist. He's a senior. He is interested in UT Austin, Rice, Texas A&amp;M, or UT Arlington. He plans to major in Math or Science. Next is Emily Tran. She's a National Merit Semi-finalist Senior. She plans to go to University of Texas and major in Business and Economics. Next is Alani Eskanga Sosa. She's National Hispanic Recognition. She plans to attend Brigham Young or University, UTA. She's considering Health Science-related field. Next is Eva Vicanti. She was unable to attend. She's National Hispanic Recognition, a senior. She would like to go to University of Texas at Austin, TCU, or University of Texas at Arlington and major in Nursing. Next is Gavin Wright. He was unable to attend. He's National African American Recognition, a junior. He plans to go to Stanford. He's majoring in Business Finance and Marketing. And last, but certainly not least, is Whitney Wright, National African American Recognition. She's a senior. She plans to go to Texas State University or the University of New Mexico, and her plans are Pre-Dentistry or Biochemistry. Congratulations to every one of you. You're top-notch.
Oh, my name is Idray Akoso. I'm here with my wonderful mom, Florence Guat, and my sister Valerie.
My name is Taylor Calhoun, and I'm here with my mom, Takiya Calhoun.
My name is Miriam De La Rosa, and I'm here with my mom.
My name is Olade Famadura, and I'm here with my mom, and I just want to thank both my parents for giving me the love, encouragement, and support that I need to succeed in life.
My name is Christopher, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, my brother, and my sister.
My name is Nicole Garderes. I'm here with my mothers, Margarita and Dolores Garderes. Thank y'all for everything.
My name is Ava Horton. I'm here with my mom.
My name's Aaron Kelly. I'm still here with my dad.
My name's Brandon Kim, and I'm here with my mom.
My name is Cassidy King, and I'm here with my parents, my younger brothers, my Nana, and my Mima.
My name is Rebecca Laura, and I'm here with my mom, Rosie Laura.
My name is Leila Lee Sanders, and I'm here with my mom.
My name's Elizabeth Marsick, and I'm here with my mom.
My name is Dejo Olabegi, and I'm here with my mom. Thank you.
My name is Charles Alloz, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my siblings.
My name is Laura Peel, and I'm here with my mom and my two grandparents.
My name's Emilio Areza. I'm here with my mom, dad, and many of my friends.
My name is Olivia Roberts, and I'm here with my mother, Alex Roberts, and my dad, Tommy Roberts. Thank you for everything.
My name is Sebastian Rodriguez, and I'm here with my mom and my dad, and I want to say, I want to give a really big thanks to them, and y mi familia en Colombia que siempre me han mucho amor. So, gracias.
Hello, my name is Moises Sanchez, and I'm here with my dad, my mom, and my younger sister. Thank you.
I'm Dewey Serakai. I'm here with my mom and my dad.
Good evening, my name is Madison Scruggs, and I'm here with my mother, Melissa Scruggs, the one and only.
My name is Jake Sweat, and I'm with my parents who are over there.
My name is Amelie Tran, and I'm here with my mom, my dad, and my sister. I'm so lucky and grateful to have you.
Hello, my name is Alan Yuskanga, and I'm here with my wonderful mom and my baby sister.
Hi, I'm Whitney Wright, and I'm here with my mother and my stepfather.
Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker requests no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No ma'am, none are registered for the agenda items. We have one later for the non-agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for Principal for Goodman Elementary, Assistant Principal for Barnett Junior High, Assistant Principal for Young Junior High, Assistant Principal for Crowell Leadership Academy, and an Assistant Principal for Sherrod Elementary.
We have a motion for Mr. Wilbanks and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? Please vote. All vote in the affirmative?
Thank you, President Fowler, and first I'd like to introduce the Principal for Goodman Elementary, Ms. Marisa Guzman. You'll see her bio. She attended University of Texas Permian Basin for Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, UTA for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction, most recently an Assistant Principal-
principal at Jones Academy in Fine Arts, Dual Language, has been an instructional coach and a fourth-grade bilingual teacher in KD ISD, a bilingual kindergarten teacher, and first-grade teacher bilingual in Irving, and also has taught in Midland ISD as well. Marisa, congratulations. Good to see you.[618.87][618.87][applause] Next, the assistant principal for Barnett Junior High is Jamad Williams.[627.87][627.87][applause] Jamad attended Wiley College for Bachelor of Arts in Sociology, UT Dallas for Master of Arts in Applied Sociology, most recently assistant principal at Spear Elementary, has also been a third-through-fifth-grade associate principal at ILT, has been an assistant principal in Dallas ISD, has been a behavioral interventionist and social-emotional academic success teacher for Arlington ISD back in the day, and has also been a coordinator with Youth with Promise Alternative School. Jamad Williams, congratulations.[665.99][665.99][applause] Next, assistant principal for Young Junior High, Gary Holycross.[673.32][673.32][applause] Gary got his Bachelor of Arts in Biblical Theology and Youth Ministry, attended Liberty University for Master of Ed in Teaching and History, most recently a special education teacher at Martin High School, has also taught Social Studies in Birdville ISD, has been a Social Studies teacher in Keller ISD, Cluster County Schools in Colorado for Social Studies teacher, Keller, and Duncanville, has had a variety of different positions. You'll see his bio there. Congratulations, Gary.[705.49][705.49][applause] Next, the assistant principal for Crowell Leadership Academy, Jennifer Barlow.[713.01][713.01][applause] Jennifer attended Ashford University for Bachelor of Arts in Social Science and Health and Human Services, Ashford University for Master of Ed in Curriculum and Instruction, most recently a third-grade teacher at Short Elementary, has been a first-grade teacher at Short and a kindergarten teacher at Short, has also been a director of schools at Primrose School of Richardson, and an assistant director and teacher as well. Jennifer, congratulations.[740.11][740.11][applause] Last but not least, assistant principal at Sherrod Elementary, Christopher Hartfield.[748.13][748.13][applause] Christopher attended University of Texas Arlington for Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, Southern Methodist University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently he was an ASPIRE AP intern in Sherrod Elementary, has also served at Berry Elementary as an AP intern, sixth-grade classroom teacher at Sterrett Elementary, and has taught third-grade ELAR in Fort Worth ISD. Christopher, congratulations.[776.73][776.73][applause]
It's a lively bunch tonight.
That's right.
Love it. Please know how much we appreciate your willingness to step up, and you have been chosen, you have been selected, so go into your new positions with confidence, knowing that you were selected, and we know that you can do the job. Thank you all so We now move to our agenda on our action items. We have two. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and we move to the action item for Consider Notice of Election. President Fowler, members of the board, you have before you the notice of election for trustee election to be held May the 6th, 2023. The election is being held to elect members to three-year terms for places six and seven of the Board of Trustees. The notice of election shall be published in a newspaper published in the territory that is covered by the election at least once, not earlier than the 30th day or later than the 10th day before Election Day. The notice of election shall state the date of the election, each place to be filled, information regarding the location of each early voting and Election Day polling place, the dates and hours of early voting, and the hours the polls will be open on Election Day. If you approve the notice of election, it would be appropriate to hear a motion at this time.
Do I have a motion? President Fowler, I move to approve the notice of election for May the 6th, 2023 trustee election. Thank you, Ms. Mays. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. McMurrell. Please vote.
Yeah.
The motion passes. Thank you. We're now at action item B. Consider candidate for Education Service Region Center.
Thank you, President Fowler. If there is no discussion, I would like to make a motion for this item. Can I go ahead and read the motion?
Please.
Thank you. President Fowler, I move to cast a ballot for Jay Thompson for Place Five on the Education Service Center, Region 11 Board of Directors, and that each person casting a vote in favor of this motion be recorded as having cast a vote for Jay Thompson.
May I second?
Thank you. I have a mo... I have a motion from Ms. McMurrell and a second by Mr. Willbanks. Please vote. Motion carries, and we select Mr. Jay Thompson. Next on our agenda, discussion item. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and tonight we bring for discussion action, possible action, the consideration of the board handbook, and I'll turn it over to our governance chair, Mr. Justin Chapa.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. This is our traditional annual presentation of the Board of Trustees Handbook. The Governance Committee is currently considering revisions to it, so presenting it to our colleagues for review. If you could pass along any suggested edits, there are a couple of areas that we do need to address that we know about that have changed since the last time we looked at this. For example, our calendar has moved a little bit in terms of what time of year we consider certain items, the process for trustee appearing virtually at a meeting, are the pre-COVID policies that we had in place that we no longer follow because we use Zoom, and so there'll be a few changes like that that we're looking at, a couple of changes with legal to make sure that it accounts for some other changes between COVID and other state law changes that govern our operations. So if you have any edits, please send them along, and we hope to bring this back for a final version for a vote on the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and I want to thank the members of the Governance Committee, Justin Chapa as Chair, Keisha Mays, and Sarah McMurrell. I know you all put in a lot of time and effort into the board handbook, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you so much. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion?
I've moved for acceptance of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. We have a motion for Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second for Mr. Chapa. Please vote. The motion carries. Thank you all. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one registered speaker for non-agenda item, Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you.
...to this second open forum segment of the meeting where we provide citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Ms. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and then please end your presentation. Mr. Jarvis?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. First of all, I would like to state that my full name is David Jarvis. My email, for anybody who wants to follow up with more information, is D as in David, D Jarvis, 1776, at icloud.com, my phone number, 817-991-7153. I'm here tonight to express my deep, deep concern of my experience of a pattern of concealment of information by this board over a period of several months. I've got three grievances pending before this board. Before I filed any grievance, I reached out directly to the board and asked you to address some of these issues. You chose not to, other than Mr. Hibbs, to his credit, responded to me. The grievance, in a nutshell, deal with issues of what policy guidance does the board give to teachers of this district on sensitive issues about sexuality, same-sex attraction, transgender. For example, if a girl comes up to a teacher and says, "I'm a girl. I was born a girl, but I really think I'm a boy. What should I do?" Or the reverse, "I'm a boy, but I think I'm a girl. What should I do?" What policy guidance does this board give your teachers about how they should handle those situations? You did not respond to me at all. I don't believe. There's no policy. That would be totally irresponsible for any board, any district of this size, to let your teachers just run blind and set up their own policies. The second grievance is when I tried to find out who worked in equity and SEL departments, I went to your legal office and asked them to give me the names of the people who worked in SEL and equity. They gave me nearly a thousand employees on a spreadsheet. That's okay. I'd worked through the 42 pages. However, the way it's structured, there's no way, it's impossible for me to identify those employees, because nowhere on the spreadsheet is it identified where they are. So, thank you for your time tonight.
We're now ready for our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to report on some information from our district. Congratulations, and you'll see some pictures here in a minute. Congratulations to Special Olympians in the Arlington ISD. Recently, the district sent 67 students from seven teams to Austin for Special Olympics State Volleyball Championship. That's the most a district has ever sent to this event. Our students excelled, and all seven teams placed in the top four of the state, with one winning the gold, three others taking the silver, two winning bronze, and another one finishing fourth. Congratulations to all the chaperones, the sponsors, our staff, our teachers, and of course, our students to their and their success. I appreciate them very much. More congratulations are in order for Seguin High School sophomore, Paul Nguyen. Paul was a lone Arlington ISD swimmer to qualify for state meet in Austin. Paul competed in the 50-yard freestyle at state, and he's just a sophomore.
Wow.
You see him there on the screen. Paul exploits didn't go unnoticed by the city either. He was honored as City of Arlington Student Athlete of the Month for February. Way to go, Paul, and I'm glad you're here a couple more years with Seguin High School. Continuing with sports, I want to send out a congratulations to 23 wrestlers who qualified for the state wrestling meet from four schools. The Martin Boys just missed out on the 6A title, finishing second in state, and had three state champions. Martins also won the state title in the girls' side as well, so congratulations to them. Black History Month wrapped up earlier this week, and I want to commend everyone throughout the district for all their outstanding events and activities they had throughout the month, whether it was an annual Black History event at Sam Houston High School, which was simply outstanding, choir performance at Butler, the spotlight of historically black colleges at Patrick Elementary, et cetera. Our schools found ways to put these spotlights on different aspects of the Black community in February, and I want to thank them for their hard work throughout our entire districts. Congratulations to them. I want to commend Blanton Elementary, Hale Elementary, and Miller Elementary for being recognized as distinguished STEM Labs in the Arlington ISD. Recently had the chance to visit the three schools and surprised the STEM lab managers at each of them. They were honored for their high student and teacher usage of the STEM labs that aligns with the state standards. Each school received a $300 check for being our three highest-scoring campuses, and as you know, we have two STEM Labs at every elementary school, thanks to our 2014 bond, and these are the highest-performing STEM Labs, so congratulations to them. And finally, they don't get a lot of recognition, but they do a lot of hard work. Congratulations to our Communications and Marketing Department for their success at the recent... You can give them an applause, because they don't get much.[1499.21][1499.21][applause] That's about all they get, you know? Their success at the recent Texas School Public Relations Association Annual Conference. The team collected 17 gold awards for their work and won four Best in Show honors at the Teesboro Conference for Flyers, the Convocation Video, the infamous pre-K marketing campaign, Full STEM Ahead, that Anita won, and it wasn't STEAM, it was STEM. That one won, I had no doubt, and we were a finalist for the Crystal Commendation for that pre-K marketing, and I want to commend Anita Foster and all her staff for their hard work. Thank you so much for representing our district exceptionally well. That concludes my report.[1543.78][1543.78][applause]
Do I have any trustees with reports?
Thank you, President Fowler. On February 22nd and 23rd, our board and superintendent, as well as a few staff members, were able to travel down to Austin to speak with several of our state legislators about our district's legislative agenda and advocate for not just Arlington ISD, but the future of Texas public schools, and I just wanted to commend all of you, all of my colleagues, and our wonderful Superintendent, Dr. Cavassos, for doing that. I really do feel as though we made some waves and we made some great connections, and I'm grateful as well for the staff behind the scenes that made it happen, and I'm really looking forward to the outcomes. I really encourage anyone watching to please reach out to your legislators now. Don't wait if you have issues that are important to you. And you can find our legislative agenda if you go to aisc.net and then click on Board of Trustees, scroll down and click on Legislative Agenda, and be sure to stay informed on the issues facing Texas public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrell. Ms. Mays, did you want to speak?
Yes, President Fowler.
You moved down to the speaking list. Let's see.
I think I'm already...
You're already on there? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. So, being the only female in a house of three males, and my husband and my granddoggie, that is also a boy dog, it is Women's History Month this month, and for that, I want to just acknowledge what the theme this year is, which is celebrating women who tell stories. And the one thing I've learned, and some of the best stories that a woman can tell, is a story about herself, a story about what she's dealt with, a story about how she's feeling, a story about how you recover from things that you have felt. So I encourage for celebration of Women's History Month, to go out and read a book that's written by a female and that's written about her life, maybe an autobiography, but I just want to celebrate all women for this month, to stop, whether it's your mother, whether it's your best friend, whether it's your support system of women, and just feed into them. And for all women, the best advice I've learned as a woman at my current age is give yourself grace. Give yourself grace. There's so much that we go through every day, and this would be all-inclusive, but since it's Women's History Month, I am speaking to women. Give yourself grace. So I have one quote, just one. "You may encounter many defeats," to my women, "but you must not be defeated. In fact, it may be necessary to encounter these defeats, so you can know who you are, what you can rise from, and how you can still come out of it." And that was written by one of my favorite writers, Maya Angelou. Thank you, President Fowler.
Thank you, Ms. Mays, and if I could just add on to a little bit of what you were saying. I just want to thank Ms. McMurrell, and I want to thank Ms. Mays for being strong women. I appreciate their leadership. I appreciate their friendship, and I just want to congratulate them on being phenomenal women, and the guys are okay too, but we're focusing on the women today. So, thank you both so much. Ms. Secretary, do we have anything to report?
No, Madam President, we do not.
All right. It is 8:11. We will now move to closed meeting pursuant to sections 551.071 through 551.081. 551.071 through 551.084 and 551.089 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We are adjourned.